Good evening and welcome. It's primary season again, and I'm Andrea Mulroney with the League of Women Voters of Lackawanna County, and I am told that my microphone is not on. Do we start again? Are we okay? All right. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. We're so glad that you're here to listen to our six candidates for Scranton City Council. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer organization made up of both men and women, and we invite you all to join us if you are so inclined. We have, I will introduce the candidates in a minute. I'd ask that everyone turn off your mobile devices or silence them, and I would also ask that you withhold any comments from the audience or applause or anything until the end when your candidates have finished with their closing statements. As I said, we are volunteers, and our debates are organized as a public service to help you and all of the voters in the area make informed choices. We would like to say that this is going to be about an hour and a half in length. The candidates are seated alphabetically on the stage. They will answer the same set of questions, and no questions were given to any of the candidates in advance. Each candidate will be allowed up to two rebuttals of one minute each. They can use the full two-minute allotment at one time if desired. So with that, let us start by introducing our candidates. And I will find the right pieces of paper. Here we go. Kyle Donahue, first seeded alphabetically, was born in Scranton, is a graduate of Bishop Henin High School, and earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Temple University in Political Science and Public Communications. He has been a member of the Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania Democratic State Committee members from 2011 to the present, and served on the Pennsylvania Democratic Party Executive Committee. He served on the Scranton School Board from 2013 to 2015, and previously served as a candidate for Scranton City Controller. He's a member of the St. Patrick's Day Parade Association and a member of the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick of Lackawanna County. His professional experience currently, he is a consultant, self-employed, and has worked on several different political candidates. Paul Duffy next, also born in Scranton, is a graduate of Scranton High School and earned a Bachelor's Degree from Keystone College. He is currently serving on the Scranton School Board and also currently serving on the Scranton Civil Service Commission. He's a member of numerous organizations, but serves on the Executive Board of the Friendly Sons of St. Patrick and the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. Paul is a former police sergeant with the Scranton Police Department and is a current area manager with Coast Tire and Auto Service Centers. Bill Gahn is a graduate, born in Scranton, a graduate of Scranton High School. He earned a Bachelor of Arts in Communications and a minor in History from the University of Scranton, and a Master of Science in Secondary Education History also from the University of Scranton, and is a certified teacher. He is a current Scranton City Councilman, serving since 2014. He was an equal opportunity specialist for the City of Scranton Office of Economic and Community Development, also a member of the St. Patrick's Day Parade Association and the North Scranton Neighborhood Association. He is currently an 11th and 12th grade American Government Teacher at the Commonwealth Charter Academy. Cesar Reyes was born in Dominican Republic, I'm sorry, and is now a resident of the City of Scranton. He graduated from high school in New York and is a registered bilingual interpreter in the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts. He is an organizer for the Scranton Latin Festival from 2006 to 2013, and is a community advocate. Cesar is currently, let's see, a staffing manager and staffing recruiter since 2003, and he drives a mobile recruiting center all throughout northeastern Pennsylvania to job fairs and into neighborhoods providing employment opportunities. Next, we have Pat Rogan. Patrick Rogan is also born in Scranton and is a graduate of West Scranton High School. He earned a Bachelor's Degree in Political Science from the University of Scranton. He is a current Scranton City Councilman and has been a member of the Greater Scranton J.C.'s and West Scranton High Park Neighborhood Watch. Pat is an employment benefits consultant for Power Kunkel and also a Realtor with Realty Network. And finally, Joe Wexler, again born in Scranton, lives in East Mountain High School. He graduated from Scranton Central High School and earned a B.S. in Public Administration from the University of Scranton. He is currently on the Scranton City Council and is the president for 2017. He's the past chairman of the Scranton Zoning Board. He is the former president of the East Mountain Residents Association and the Lackawanna German-American Federation at Waldorf Park. He has over 36 years of management experience gained in the local manufacturing industry and is currently employed as the production coordinator overseeing over 100 production employees. And with that, I am done talking for the night, and I'm going to start asking questions and let these candidates give you the answers. So, let's start with what the Home Rule Charter says is your job description. "The mayor and council jointly shall be the governing body of Scranton City Government. The powers of the city government shall be divided among the executive and legislative branches of the city government, and power belonging to one branch of the government shall not be exercised by the other branch except as expressly provided in this charter." So basically, you're the legislative branch. My first question for you, and we drew names before we got started, and Pat Rogan will answer the first question first, and then we'll be moving in around Robin. So the first question pertains to the sewer sale, and we have a minute and a half timed responses for everything. "The biggest headline regarding the city's finances at this time seems to pertain to the sale of the sewer system. Please discuss what you believe are the issues pertaining to the sale and what action you, as a member of council, can take." I'll ask about stormwater management in the next question, so please focus on finances. Pat, the question to you.
Thank you very much, and before I get into that question, I'd first like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us today, the University of Scranton as well. It's great to be here in this new building. Thank the audience as well for coming and those who are watching on TV. Regarding the sale of the sewer authority, the most important issue facing the city council right now is the use of those proceeds. Personally, I believe the proceeds need to be used in a way where we could get the most bang for the buck for the taxpayers. A big part of those proceeds have been used to pay down long-term, high-interest debt. $16 million has already been paid off. We're looking to do more. By paying off that debt, what that means to the residents of Scranton, when that debt is off the books, that will show up in your tax bill. There's dedicated millage associated with much of this debt. So by using some of that, some of those proceeds to reduce our debts, we could use it to generate some tax savings to the residents of Scranton. Secondly, there's no question that Scranton's pension system is severely distressed. Auditor General Dee Pasquale's last report, I believe, was around 24% funded. So we need to do much more on the pension front as well, and that affects everyone because the general fund does help pay for the pensions. So we need to use it, in short, to shore up our pension funds and to pay down debt that will help the citizens of Scranton.
Thank you. Joe, the question to you.
Thank you. Echoing much of what Councilman Rogan has said since we've been dealing with this together, the city council right now has an opportunity to decide what the proceeds from the sale will be used for. We have used some of it to pay down some long-term debt, which has resulted in the savings of almost $3 million. We are looking at using some of that money also for a capital improvement program, which is well-needed within City Hall. If you've been in City Hall, you can see that the building is in need of repair. We're also going to use about $500,000 for more economic development with, working with a national resource network and helping improving our downtown. We also are planning, as the original sale was proposed, we are going to put some, about $21 million into the pensions. In terms of getting that money into the pensions, we are working with the unions right now in determining some improvements to the pension system that will help us avoid the situation where we're in trouble again on the pension. So, in all told, I think there's about $21 million that's going into the pension, and then there's also some money that's available that's outstanding as the sewer authority closes down. We're also using that money to buy down the interest assumption, which is one of our problems with the pension. So overall, the proceeds from the sale are going to help Scranton and add more money to our budget as the year goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, the question to you.
I would like to first thank the League of Women Voters and the University of Scranton for hosting this debate tonight. The first thing about the sewer sale that I think that it really lacks is, it has a lack of transparency to it. Number one, being the net gain from the sewer sale going from $96 million to $70 million, I just don't feel like that was properly explained to us how that deal was structured and how that deal was going to work. Also, the $3.1 million in legal fees that were paid out for the sewer sale, I think we need more transparency on that, and, I mean, you mentioned about asking stormwater, but I think a lack of a plan for stormwater is also one of the issues with the sewer sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, the question to you, please.
Yes. It's interesting going third or fourth because you do echo a lot of the sentiment from the other candidates. But I think more, most importantly with the sewer sale is the sale of the proceeds, specifically the pension that I was formerly a part of, being a Scranton police officer for 11 years before I left. It was distressed then, and it's much more distressed now. That number is correct, it's 20, I believe last year it was 23%. We've risen to 25% because the police officers have, instead of 3.25% contribution into the pension, they've jumped it to 6. So I think we'll continue to see a little bit of growth from that. However, our minimum municipal obligation is about $18 million. That has to be put into the pension, no matter what happens. If we don't do something quickly to satisfy that, that's quickly becoming, and I believe is, our biggest bill that we have to pay every single year, and we can't get around that. I think some of the pension reform that the unions have done, coupled with us putting some money into the pension, and not being on the actual council, it's easy to do a lot of homework and it's easy to be a candidate. However, you don't see all the actuarial studies and things like that that I've seen in the past with other pensions, but I think that we have to do our due diligence in shoring that up as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, the question goes to you.
Thank you very much. I wouldn't spend a dime of the sale from the proceeds of the Scranton Sewer Authority until I was absolutely positive that it was transparent to the public. I've been living this for the last year, and we have spent nearly $5 million on attorneys from the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority. $12 million, we still can't get an accounting of exactly where that went. Quite frankly, it is a disgrace. I asked for invoices from the attorney's fees, and I was given a very large document, and everything was redacted. So I've actually, this week, I'm going to appeal to the Office of Open Records so that we can get that information. We have to keep in mind that this is ratepayer money. That was a public asset. And in the history of the City of Scranton, we've seen politicians see dollar signs and they go crazy, but they don't look at the long-term plan. We'll talk about stormwater management in a second, but again, I am deeply, deeply concerned by the lack of transparency with this sale, and I think it needs to be investigated further. Thank you.
Thank you. Cesar, the question to you.
First, I would like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here, and also for the other candidates that are here, and commend those that are actually running again. I believe that question would be better answered by those who were already, who have already served time here in council. I do understand it is very, very important to put money back in the pensions, and I must say that I agree 100% with what Bill just said. I wouldn't do anything without actually reviewing the math and seeing where everything, everything went, every dollar, what are we going to do with it, and make sure that everything matches, because we're, you know, we're dealing with something big here.
Okay, thank you. The second question will go first to Joe Wexler. Joe, the question pertains to stormwater management, again, a 90-second timed response on everything. As you know, Scranton is still responsible for stormwater management, and several of you, in your interview with the Times Tribune, stated that developing a plan for this is one of your highest priorities. According to the Home Rule Charter, city council is the legislative branch of our government. What specifically can and will you do regarding this issue?
Specifically, as in almost any issue, all the debate ends up in city council. So our role in the debate will be, we're on television every Thursday night, and that is where comments are made from people in Scranton and up and down the valley. The one thing to remember with stormwater management is this is a federally mandated program for us. Whether the sewer authority was sold or not sold, Scranton would be responsible for improving the stormwater management system. I think in terms of council, we are also, there have been some discussions, the cities along the Lackawanna River are also talking about these stormwater management plans, and I think we owe it to the people of Scranton and to the people of Lackawanna County to see what type of programs we can work with together to minimize the cost. And just to repeat, as in city council, our job is to move the debate, make sure all parties are heard, and make sure that all the information is distributed wisely.
Thank you. Kyle, the question goes to you. What specifically can and will you do regarding this issue?
I think this is the number-one infrastructure priority in, over the next four years, because it doesn't matter how many roads you pave, if you don't deal with stormwater and the effects it has on our roads, on our bridges, and on our infrastructure, then it doesn't matter how much money you keep on throwing into those other things. I think it was completely irresponsible to sell the sewer authority without a plan first in place for stormwater. I also don't believe that the City of Scranton could go it alone, because water doesn't stop at municipal borders. So I think the best approach to stormwater management has to include all municipalities up and down the Lackawanna Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul, the question to you.
Thank you. One of the things that I would specifically do is look for ways that the taxpayers could save money. All the sewer sale has already been completed. The stormwater management is a federal mandate. What I've done through the research that I've seen is, there are certain things that we can do to help the taxpayers, or the taxpayers may be able to do to help themselves save money. For instance, what I've come to learn and what I've seen is that we're taxed specifically by the square inches and square foot of our roof, as well as our driveways and things of that nature. I did see that other areas started to do things where they allowed their residents to devise their own stormwater catchment, specifically like a drainage proposal plan, and if you were able to do that and the city did approve it, then you would get a reduction in that bill. I've also looked around, it seems like Indiana, Pennsylvania, for some reason, does that pretty well. It's a very inexpensive proposition. I don't know why they've done it a lot, but the most important part of this is going to be collaboration and listening to people. We don't have all of the answers up here. We have a lot of resources at our fingertips, but we have to listen to the people who know about these things, find the best deal we can, and do the right thing for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you, please.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I've been on this issue now for the last year, and my biggest concern a year ago, and it still is today, is that we did this whole thing backwards. We sold off our last asset that was taking care of all of the stormwater management in the city, and we have no plan. That would be like me and my wife selling our house and not having somewhere to live, not having somewhere to move into. So we did it totally backwards. There's a study currently going on now to study stormwater management, but it was done too late. The second thing, we could cite all the studies in the world. I've been traveling across this city for the last few months. I've sat across the table from elderly people. They can't afford any more increases or fees. They just can't afford it. So my biggest fear is that we're going to slap another tax, another fee, on the elderly people of this city for rainwater. We didn't think it through. I'll continue to fight for the people of this city, our senior citizens, to make sure that we don't just slap them with another tax and walk away.
Thank you. Cesar, the question to you, please.
Thank you. I believe, thinking as a resident and as a taxpayer, and, you know, as a hard-working citizen, if, I wouldn't be, I would not agree to tax the residents on something that the city had made a decision on, or maybe made a bad decision on, and did not research what the city was going to do before making this move. So my opinion would be, regardless of what it is, how we're going to do it, we must find a way to fix it without having that being a burden on the residents.
Thank you. Pat, the question to you, please.
Yes, thank you. For me, I want to address this in two parts. The first part is the current situation, and our first priority right now needs to be helping people that have been dealing with stormwater problems for decades. For instance, the bottom of Greenwood Street, the bottom of Luzern Street, those areas have been flooding when we get heavy rains for as long as I lived. Somebody else mentioned about road paving, and I agree completely that if we're going to pave roads, we have to make sure the stormwater in those areas is taken care of as well. There's a big problem in Kaiser Valley with flooding that's been publicized at our council meetings. That problem starts in Newton Ransom, and it washes down West Mountain Road. West Mountain Road was recently paved, but because of the amount of water coming down, the road is starting to erode from out. So it needs to be done, and it's a comprehensive approach, but that first priority has to be helping the people that have been dealing with this for quite some time. I know there are talks about putting money into this study or that study. I would much prefer see that money be set aside to help with these longstanding problems than to pay a consultant for another study. The second part of the issue is the Environmental Protection Agency. Currently, when we have a heavy rainstorm in Scranton, there's actually, because we have a combined system, there's raw sewage flooding into our rivers. That's not acceptable, it's not friendly for the environment, and it's illegal, and that has to stop as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The third question, we'll start with Kyle Donahue. Kyle, this one pertains to garbage fees. Also from the interviews with the Times Tribune, several candidates expressed the need to change the city's garbage fee structure. Is this the responsibility of city council, and what specific action can you and will you take as a council member?
I think that it's outrageous to ask, you know, a senior citizen who's, you know, living on a fixed income to pay a $300 garbage fee if they're putting out one bag of garbage a week. So we have to sort of protect what we're charging them, but also protect the integrity of what DPW is willing to collect. So we have to find a balance where we could, we could help out the people who are on fixed incomes, who may not put out as much garbage, but still be able to put out garbage to be, that would be able to be collected on a larger scale if you go and clean out your, if you clean out your basement one day, you clean out your garage one day, that garbage will be picked up. But you can't expect a senior citizen on a fixed income to sit there and pay $300 a year for one bag a week.
Thank you. Paul, the question goes to you, please.
Yes. Just a quick reminder with regard to this question, before the last day of this month, if you do pay your garbage fee, there is a $30, a 10% reduction in that fee. So that's the first year I believe that they're doing this, so it will be $270 instead of 300. One of the very first things that I want to do when I get on council is reduce this fee. It's much easier to reduce a fee than it is taxes. I think it's astronomical. I own multiple properties in the city, and I also own properties outside of the city. Outside of the city, in Dunmore, my garbage fee has gone away. Meanwhile, in Scranton, it has doubled, and every time I walk, I meet the senior citizens, I talk to people, and Kyle is exactly right, people that put out one bag of garbage as compared to myself, a family of four with two young children, there's something that has to give there. There has to be some kind of leeway for our senior citizens, for the people that can't afford to pay that. I'm burdened with this payment every year, multiple times on every single unit that I have. It will be the first order of business for me as soon as I get into work on lessening this fee and easing some of the burden that our residents face.
Thank you. Bill, the question goes to you, please.
Yes. For the last year, again, I've been dealing with this issue. I have researched almost every community up and down the East Coast. I was specifically in contact with communities around Boston, Massachusetts, specifically a company called Waste Zero, and they do something pretty unique up in Massachusetts and all up and down the East Coast. They have a per-bag fee or a hybrid fee, and that would increase recycling. It would help our senior citizens out. As I go door-to-door across the city and I sit across the kitchen table from our elderly residents, they cannot pay $300 a year for garbage. They have to choose whether or not they're going to get their medication, whether or not they're going to have their meal at night, or whether or not they're going to pay $300. And where is the money going? It's going into a black hole. It's not like it's going to pave streets, it's not like it's going to get new recycling equipment or new trucks for the DPW. It's going into the general fund. So we need a complete study, we need a complete overhaul. I think we can be more efficient, and I definitely think studying a per-bag or a hybrid fee would be the way to go.
Thank you. Cesar, the question goes to you.
I think that it's completely ridiculous. We have been paying garbage fees for quite some time. Everyone has struggles with their bills, and it's not just garbage, it's everything else. And, you know, it seems like, it seems like every chance that the city has to increase, you know, a fee on something or the taxes, it just gets harder for senior citizens, for people that, you know, are barely making it. I want to put the example of my mother. My mother, she owns a half double, and she's struggling very hard. She's, it almost seems like she opens the mail, and every time she opens the mail, it's a bill, different bill, and it's got to do with the city. She's, she's got a family member living on the other side, so now she's got to pay twice as much as if she was, you know, living in a single house, just twice. I think it's ridiculous. I think we should come together, find a better solution, and do away with the high, the high fee, the high garbage fee.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you.
Thank you, and I'm glad to have answered this one towards the end, because I'm glad to hear all the support for an idea I initially floated probably six or seven years ago to change the current structure of Scranton's garbage fee. Everyone to the right of me is absolutely correct. The fee is unfair, it's unsustainable, it's particularly not fair to senior citizens and people who live alone. I was on council when the former mayor increased the fee from $150 to $300, and I'm proud to say I voted against that increase. As was just mentioned, when these type of fees come up, I also think of my mother. My mother's a widow and she lives alone. She has one bag of garbage a week. How is it fair that a widow who lives alone pays the same garbage fee as a family of six, or a family of eight who's putting out five, six, seven bags? It's not fair. And the garbage fee is the only fee that you pay out of all of your bills that everyone pays the same rate, whether it's just you, or whether it's 12 people in a one-room house. The fee is the same. We need to increase our recycling, which I've been a strong advocate for and the entire city council has, and we need to, we need to do that to bring the fee down. And I floated a per-bag fee or a hybrid system many years ago, and I'm glad to hear that there's becoming more and more support for that, because this fee really hurts our senior citizens the most, and we need to help them.
Thank you. And Joe, the question to you, please.
Thank you. As I've said on city council, there has been a consensus more towards a move towards a hybrid fee. Initially, I was not in favor of a per-bag fee because I am concerned about illegal dumping. I live on East Mountain, and our garbage days are Thursdays and Fridays, and every Thursday, every Friday, the cars come down from Moscow and drop their garbage in Scranton. So I am concerned that there will be a problem with dumping. I do believe that we have to increase our recycling, and I think a per-bag fee would lead to that, because people would recycle instead of putting their cans and bottles and papers into bags. One of the reasons why our fee is so high is there's an awful lot of people that don't pay the fee, and prior to 2013, there was no ramifications for not paying your fee. The city council, working with the administration, we have instituted a lien process now. Leans have been filed for garbage fees that were delinquent in 2011 and 2012. The surprising number with that, it's over $2 million of money that was not paid, that you and I and everyone else paid that money. So I am happy to be part of a system that, we're going to try to make people be responsible to pay their bills, because it's more unfair to a grandma who pays $300 than a renter who doesn't pay anything. And I'm very happy that we have become, began enforcement of collecting those fees.
Okay, thank you. The next question will go first to Paul Duffy. So we've talked about fees and taxes a little bit, let's talk about revenue. What can or should city council do to increase revenue other than raising taxes, and please focus only on realistic options that can be accomplished by council? Paul, the question to you.
Great question. The thing that I focus immediately on is the growth of our city. How do we grow our city? How do we quickly do it? Being a former business owner, myself and my wife ran a floral shop for approximately 10 years, and we've dealt with the struggles of the mercantile tax, of the business privilege tax. And it's one of the main reasons that we stopped after 10 years doing business, and it became difficult to continue to compete against the bigger companies that come in and do this, against people that are outsourcing the small jobs from the small mom-and-pop shops. We have to make ourselves more amiable to any business that wants to come in here and work with us. We have to pave the way, not set up roadblocks, not continually stop the progress. That's exactly what happens. Knowing that firsthand, that's exactly what happens, even if you try to add on or do more things. I saw that the council, and I allow them for doing this, they started, as we did in the school board, they started a type of a K OZ program for, you know, constructions onto buildings and new constructions for buildings in the City of Scranton. They are the things that we need, they are the things that are going to stabilize our city, make our city... They are the things that are going to stabilize our city, make our city the city that everyone wants to come to, rather than the last place that an area wants to open a business. We have to start doing things to make ourselves more profitable.
Thank you. Bill, the question about revenue to you.
Sure, thank you. For the past few months, I've been working with the city administration and a company called Smart City Media to increase the way that we pay attention to technology in the city of Scranton. Since I've been on council, we've done quite a few things to be more transparent and to be more efficient. One of those things is to come up with a memorandum of understanding with this company to place kiosks strategically in our downtown. They would help people who are walking around to find small businesses, to find current events. If there was anything, an emergency in the city, would broadcast on these kiosks. And the best part about that is, we could make ad revenue off of that. The projections that we've seen are in five, in a five-year span, we could make over a million dollars. So I would take that revenue, and I would put it back into our neighborhoods. I'd put it back into our senior citizens' hands. I would help people repair their homes, paint their homes, fix their porches, things like that, so that we can improve the stability of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Caesar, the question goes to you, please. What revenue sources could we possibly look to?
I believe that we should, we should be more business-friendly to attract more business growth. I also believe that maybe we should look at our enforcement codes, and maybe simplify our enforcement codes to allow, to allow more businesses to actually come in, want to come into the city. Instead of deterring businesses that want to come in, million-dollar companies that want to come into our, to our city and invest, maybe bring in four, three, four, 500 jobs. I feel that as if we're, we're doing, we're doing it backwards. Whether it's a big, whether it's a big company or a small business, mom-and-pops, we should, we should strive to want to have them open their business, offer incentives, maybe have, and create an organization that can help businesses, or help someone that wants to open up a business. I don't see that here. I don't see any, any kind of encouragement for people that live here, even people that have been living here, want to open up their, their first business. Just like you're, you want to buy a home, it's a dream, a lot of people have a dream they want to open up their own business. So I think more business growth is very, very important. The more jobs, the more jobs, then I think that's the key for a lot of our issues, you know, and have more revenue here in the city.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you.
Yes, first, two examples of things that I have done. The first, and it is a small one, but it is, does take a lot of small initiatives to get the city moving in the right direction. The first, and I'm glad that my colleagues on the council supported this, and it passed unanimously, we did propose a foreclosure registration, and it did pass and become law, where banks, if they want to foreclose on somebody's property, they have to pay to, pay a fee to the city, which generates revenue, and appoint a contact person. So if that foreclosed property is in disrepair, the city inspectors have somebody to call to get it taken care of. That program has been wildly successful, and has been bringing in revenue to the city, which we have in turn used to help first-time homebuyers in the city of Scranton. So that is one true example how we brought more revenue into the city. Secondly, as chair for the Office of Economic and Community Development, a big part of my role is working with, working with that office and trying to attract new businesses. In the last few years, we have attracted, and they haven't gotten a ton of attention, but there are some small technology startups that were brought into the city, and they're looking to grow. As a general theme, one other problem that we have, again, is on the garbage collection. The garbage fee collection rates are much less than the tax collection rates. My general philosophy is that we need more people paying less, not less people paying more. So we need to make sure that people who are delinquent pay their fees, because we can't keep coming back to the same people to keep paying more.
Thank you. Joe, the question to you, please.
I think in terms of revenue, the first thing that we have to realize is that there really can be no more significant real estate taxes in the city. We have taxed our properties to the, to the point where you don't get any money back on your return of your sale. So first, we have to realize that we can't raise property taxes significantly anymore. The second thing is, as a council, we have, as Pat said, many initiatives that we've developed, including the land bank, we've, get property back on, on property, we've lowered the transfer tax for real estate, and we're also evaluating replacing the mercantile tax with, with the payroll tax. This council has worked to reduce fees, to make them affordable, so more people pay them, as was said. We also are looking at ways to make it easier to pay your fees. We've instituted a process where you can pay your garbage fee with electronic bank transfer. You can also pay it with a credit card. So we want to be more proactive in helping people to pay easier, to get that done. And I think we have to look at our downtown as becoming a neighborhood. We need to encourage more people living downtown. We need to find a way to have more people move into the city and pay more of tax, of wage tax.
Thank you. And Kyle, the question to you, please.
Well, first and foremost, I think we need to increase the rate of collection on our current fees. Joe mentioned before that the rate of collection isn't too high on the garbage fee, and that's why it is so high. Well, there has to be some sort of penalty if you're not paying the garbage fee. Only responsible homeowners shouldn't be paying the garbage fee. The same goes for the rental registration fee. There should be some sort of enforcement mechanism in place that if they're not paying what they're supposed to be paying, that there's some sort of penalty. We can't be, over and over again, putting at a disadvantage the responsible homeowners and property owners in the city. We need to first increase the rate of collection on all of our current fees, and then explore ways to lower those fees. First, and then second off, we have to also explore options to replace the business privilege, mercantile tax, and even to try to lower the wage tax, because I believe all three taxes are an impediment to economic development. And like, I believe someone said before me that we need to increase our revenue, so more people, more people are paying less than less, than less people paying more. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Bill Gahn. Bill, let's talk about public-private partnerships. Public-private partnerships are becoming more common throughout the country as governments try to address fiscal stress. Please share your thoughts on the pros and cons of such partnerships, and give an example or two of current or possible public-private partnerships that you believe would be beneficial to Scranton residents.
I think it's very important. I think for any city that wants to be progressive and actually have a vision, which we've been lacking for the last four years, there's been a leadership vacuum in the city of Scranton with our current mayor and his administration. You need a public-private partnership. One of the examples that I can give you, and actually one that I pushed for very heavily, was the Scranton Abington Planning Association. Scranton joined that along with other communities in our region. We're currently trying to update our zoning ordinances, and we're working together so that the city of Scranton can be an urban center. Instead of Dixon City and other communities taking jobs away from us, we're going to work together to make sure that the city is the destination in northeastern Pennsylvania. But again, we need a progressive vision. We need leadership. We need to reinvent ourselves. We need to tell our story. We've been so busy with raising taxes, raising fees, adding positions, that we're not telling our story. I haven't seen a vision in the last four years. So I think that we have to continue to be progressive, and to tell our story, and to motivate and inspire our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Caesar, the question goes to you, please.
I would say I would be, I would be all for it on privatizing, only, only if we can see, you know, we can see the numbers, we can see the math, we can see that it works out, we can see that we're not, we're not laying, we're not laying off workers, we're not, you know, taking off workers that we already, that we constantly have, and have them losing their jobs, because now we went, you know, to a private. So I would say as long as it works out, and it reduces the burden on the taxpayers, then I would be all for it. As long as it's not, the taxes are not going up, we're not coming up with new fees, I would be all for it.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you.
Yes, regarding public-private partnerships, the prime example of a successful and public-private partnership that's going to be breaking ground in the next month is the Scranton Lace Works. Anyone who lives in Scranton knows the Scranton Lace Works has been in deplorable condition for decades. The residents of Lower Green Ridge have had, had enough. They're sick of having a dilapidated building in their neighborhood. Thanks to some developers who are willing to put a risk, and the city that was willing to give an incentive to these developers, ground is going to be broken on the new Scranton Lace Works within the next few months. This is a perfect example of government working with industry outside of the government as partners, to clean up a neighborhood, to bring more residential housing into the city, and to increase our tax base, because every single person that lives in one of those houses is going to be paying the wage tax to the city, they're going to be paying, some of the owners will be paying property taxes to the city, and that's how we grow our tax base. It's partnerships like what's done with the Scranton Lace Works, and I will always support those type of projects as long as I'm on council.
Thank you. Joe, the question to you, please.
Yes, actually, there's been quite a few private-public partnerships that's been going on over the past couple of years. University of Scranton, Lackawanna College, and Allied Services has stepped up to help us with our financial recovery plan. They've been paying our consultant, Henry Aramosa. Toyota of Scranton has stepped up big time for, for the city of Scranton, donating vehicles to our police and fire department. We've been, we've been working with, we've been working with several, several other agencies that are applying for grants. The Scranton government has been the conduit for their applications for LSA money. Scranton will be receiving the management fees for those programs if they're successfully accepted. We are looking at increased contributions and more partnerships with the University of Scranton. Right now, a University of Scranton class is helping city council prepare an internet site, and they're doing that free of charge to us. I think we have a wealth of talents among all of our colleges in the area, and I think utilizing those for some consulting services and for improvements for our city government is a well, a well-proposed.
Thank you. Kyle, the question goes to you, please.
Well, first and foremost, I think the best way to go about stormwater would be to be a public and private partnership. And then also, we have to work with all of our colleges and universities so that we are an education destination, so to say. You know, we, we also have to keep on working, like Joe said, with the, you know, Toyota of Scranton, or, you know, that give back to the community. I'm in favor of any private-public partnership that would help move our city forward and try to foster some economic development, so we could create jobs and increase our tax base.
Thank you. Paul, the question to you.
Thank you. Yeah, Pat stole a little of my thunder. As soon as you finished your question, I thought about the Lace Works project. We, on the school board as well, we dealt with that, and that could potentially be over 200 units, bringing in, if they were ever, they're not originally going to be, but they can be sold individually at some point. Those units could add so much growth, so much income to our city. Any public, public and private partnership that's going to aid the city in any way is a good thing. It's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring people to the area, and I think that the Lace Works is probably specifically the biggest one that is taking place right now in the city of Scranton.
Thank you. So the next question will go first to Caesar Reyes. So Caesar, we've talked about public-private partnerships, let's talk about public-public partnerships. So I know in my household, we talk about taxes all the time, and I know that we talk about being one body who pays for Scranton city taxes, Scranton school district taxes, and also Lackawanna County taxes. And I won't even get into the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and my federal tax bill as well. What can we do in this area? When you're talking about the city, the school districts, and the county in particular, all taxing the same people, how can we work better, smarter, for all of our residents to reduce expenses? What can these three taxing bodies do?
Well, I must say, for someone coming in to this position, and we don't always have the right answer to everything, and I'm speaking to you as a resident, as a taxpayer, I would, I would actually, I would actually have to sit down with all these fine gentlemen right here and come up with a really solid plan, where we can come up with ideas on where we can reduce some of, some of the money that we're paying on to, for example, school taxes. If you, if you notice, we're paying more, we're paying more school taxes than we are for the city. So how, you know, how can that be? Can we work on maybe reducing the school taxes, reducing some of the taxes? Most definitely, this is something that we would actually have to sit down and come together with a plan.
Okay, thank you. Pat, the question goes to you. How can the city, the school district, and the county work together?
Thank you. This is a great question, and the school taxes were brought up, so I do want to mention, you know, to the average taxpayer out there, they're paying one tax bill, as was mentioned. They're not concerned whether it's going to the school district, the county, the city. They get one tax bill, and they write one or two checks. So at the end of the day, the taxpayers that are paying to the school district, the county, and the city, they're all the same people, and we need to look out for them. As a councilman and the entire city council, the biggest thing we've done to push for tax reform is pushing the state legislature to pass Senate Bill 76, which would eliminate real estate property taxes to fund the school districts. It would change it to an entirely different model, and it would take the burden off of senior citizens and working families. So I am proud to have pushed for Senate Bill 76, the elimination of school property taxes, and I will continue to push for the elimination of school property taxes. As Councilman Wexler mentioned earlier, city council has a bully pulpit every Thursday night. We're on TV, the newspaper is there, so I make sure on that issue, my voice is heard. Mr. Duffy mentioned that, you know, we work together, the city and the school district and the county, to get the Lace Works project going. That's another prime example of the intergovernmental cooperation, and I believe it was Mr. Gahn that mentioned the tax abatement program for new development within the city, which is another prime example of the city council, the school district, and the county working together. Because at the end of the day, we're looking out for all the same people, so we do need to work together.
Thank you. Joe, the question goes to you, please.
I think a lot of our cooperation could be solved with one issue, reassessment. If the county would cooperate with the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District in completing the reassessment, it would be a large boon to Scranton. Scranton is disadvantaged in our, in our taxing because of the, of the assessment, the current assessment, and that would be, the first step towards cooperation would lead to a huge success for the city of Scranton. We have been working together. We work together on the land bank with the county and the school district. We work together on the new tax free for new construction, and we've also looked at some shared services. We haven't had any success with that yet, but we are looking at things that we can share services with. But the one thing I can tell you is, in terms of what we've done on city council, especially as myself as council president, I have an open dialogue with the school board directors, I have an open dialogue with the county commissioners, I have an open dialogue with all the state reps, and also with State Senator Blake. I haven't made it up to the governor yet, so I'm trying, and maybe eventually I'll get that far, but as, as city council president right now, I do have the ability to call these people on the phone, and as it was different four years ago, they take my call now, which is, which is sometimes a good thing for me, and sometimes a bad thing for them, but the, there is a new spirit of cooperation among council, the administration, and all the other government bodies within the city.
Okay, thank you. Kyle, the question goes to you.
First, I'd like to start off with cooperation between the city and school district, because when, when you talk about economic development, the first thing that companies do, or people do when they think about moving to an area, is researching schools. And as a school director for two years, and also as the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, I felt like I was standing on top of the administration building screaming about our budget deficit, and no one seemed to listen. So they need to get that under control on their end first, before, so that we could start trying to sell our city to companies and people to move back into our area. Secondly, when it comes to the county, Joe's absolutely right that we're in desperate need of a county reassessment. One hasn't been done in close to 50 years, and that's an extreme disadvantage to the city. to 50 years, and that's an extreme disadvantage to the city. On the land bank, and also the land bank is something that just started, but it looks like it has some promise for cleaning up some blighted properties in the city to hopefully give us a better look and have more people moving in to expand our tax base.
Thank you. Paul, the question to you.
Thank you. Yeah, the collaboration, what I love about this question is it's based in collaboration. It's based in everybody coming together and working together. And as has been stated numerous times, I think we have been collaborating. One of the things that I took advantage of when I built a home in the city was there was a two-year, basically a K O Z, a hybrid of the K O Z program. It's what I love. For two years, I didn't have to pay a tax bill. Over in the West Granton, there was probably 200, 300 homes built, and for 10 years, they didn't have to pay a tax bill. What I think will spur growth, which is the heart of the question, and what could we do as a collaboration to help that would be ease the burden on the citizens, ease the burden on the taxpayers, allow them to come into our city, and after building a home, believe me, and I'm sure as many know as homeowners, you don't have a lot of extra money to go around once you do something like that. So to not have a tax bill for a few years and allow yourself to get back onto your feet and actually, instead of building a house, start doing the driveway and the grass and everything else that comes with building a house, those are the things that are going to spur people moving into the city instead of moving out. So I think they are the things that I think we should collaboratively work on to ensure that people want to move here, people want to do business here, and they want to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you.
Yes, thank you. One of the items in our recovery plan that I was particularly interested in, that hasn't been accomplished yet, is a shared services committee. In our recovery plan, it calls for the mayor to convene this committee with other communities in the region around northeastern Pennsylvania. So I'll continue to push for the administration to do that, because I think it's important that we collaborate and we share our resources. I can give you two specific examples. I was at the forefront of pushing for a Lackawanna County Scranton land bank. I crafted, or helped craft it, the intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, and the Scranton School District. Everybody in their neighborhood has one home on their block that they wish would either get torn down or fixed up. It lowers your property value, you don't like walking your dog by it every day, and all of the neighbors get together and they talk about it. There's one that I actually witnessed yesterday on North Rebecca Avenue in West Granton. It's a prime position, or it's in a prime position, to be a land bank property. So I got together with those neighbors, and I'm going to push for that. House to be demolished, the lot to be given to one of the neighbors so that it can be put back on the tax rolls, and then we can continue to improve and stabilize our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Pat Rogan. So one of the things, another item that came up in your interviews with the Times Tribune pertained to pensions. And we read about them in the newspaper, and we hear about them on TV, not just pertaining to Scranton, but across the Commonwealth. So what is the issue with our pension, and how can it be solved?
Well, there's a number of issues with our pension, unfortunately. Just to cite some figures, so people could better understand, in 2017, our minimum obligation paying towards our pension fund was $18.8 million. So that's $18.8 million going into a pension fund, just trying to maintain. It's like paying the minimum on a credit card, and you could imagine what $18 million could do in the city as far as infrastructure and other programs goes. As I mentioned earlier, the 2015 audit showed that the pensions were funded around 24.3%. So that's the situation that we're facing. A number of items are in the works to help reform the pension system. There is an RFP out for a third-party administrator that will help crack down on some of the disability pensions and to better monitor the pension arrangement. Also, our police officers and firefighters did agree to increase their contribution. Previously, they were paying 3.5% of their wage into the pension fund. Now they are paying 6%. But this issue, I think, is one of the least understood issues by the general public, but it's one of the most important. Because if the pension fund goes dry, it is the city's obligation to pay into that pension fund. The police officers and firefighters that are receiving that fund do not receive social security. This is their only retirement fund. So that promise was made to them, and it needs to be kept, but at the same time, it can't be kept on the backs of the taxpayers. So we need to continue to work to crack down on the disability pensions and work to get these funding levels up.
Thank you. Joe, the question to you. What can we do about the pension problem?
The pension problem, which was easy, we could give you an answer in a minute and a half on the pension problem, but we can't do that. But the one thing I would like to mention is, we have established a partnership with our Uniform Services, that they have been contributing more to the pension. We have seen an increase in the funding levels because, a couple of different reasons. One, there's more money going in. Number two, we've been using some professional management to decide how that money is invested. And we've also seen really a decrease in disability pension requests. There is a new spirit of cooperation amongst the administration, the city, and our unions. They are more interested in solving this problem than we are. After all, it's their money. They want to solve the problem. There is a lot of talk about reforms, but really, the true reform has to come from the state of Pennsylvania. We could have everybody agree tomorrow to go to a 401K type of plan, like everybody suggests, but state law prevents Scranton to do that. So we need help at the state level as well. The third-party administrator is going to be a help to us. Once again, everyone's agreed to participate and work with that to help relieve the costs. But overall, we do need help from the state level in getting some reform.
Thank you. Kyle, the question to you.
The need to shore up the pension funds is one of the biggest fiscal problems that we face. In order to get out of distressed status, we could sit there and we could balance budgets, and we could do everything right. But if we don't shore up our pensions, we're not going to be in a position to not only exit distressed status, but to make sure that we never enter into, excuse me, distressed status ever again. We need to get the disability pensions under control, both how they're awarded moving forward, and if there's anything we could do to recoup some of the disability pensions from the past. There needs to be a third-party administrator, absolutely. And also, we also need some sort of reform on the state level. And this isn't only for the city's financial health, but also to make sure that the city workers get what they were promised. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, the question to you.
So having dealt with this one firsthand, as well as a police officer for many years, and then moving on to the Shroud Area Regional Police Department, I was an operations lieutenant down there. So I was an administrative body in a police department that their funding actuarial was about 85%. One thing that the federal government did bad, I'm going to take it a step further to the federal government rather than the state government. In 2009, when we had the drastic crash, the ripple effect from that was local governments weren't able to pay their bills. What the government created was a thing called smoothing. They allowed the government to pay 70% of this minimum municipal obligation, or 80%, or 90%, whatever they saw fit, to avoid going into things like distressed city status and distressed municipality statuses. So, that was a terrible move. In 2009, I was laid off from the Shroud Area Regional Police Department while my wife was seven months pregnant, because Shroud did not choose to smooth, they chose to fund their minimum municipal obligation. And in retrospect, that was probably one of the best things they could have done. And I wound up coming back to that place, and I wound up becoming a lieutenant. But smoothing is not the way to go when it comes to reforming our pensions. Our pensions are funded at 23%. Our MMO is $18 million, and our city budget for 2017 is $108 million. That's 10% of our annual fiscal budget that goes right out the window immediately. We have to continue the progression of the police and fire paying a little bit more, which has been fantastic, and it has helped. And we have to make sure that we're fiscally responsible with every dime, and that we put the right amount of money into the pension fund to shore it up properly.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you.
Sure. Well, there's a few different problems here. Number one, the city historically has significantly underfunded the pension plans. From 2011 to 2016, they underfunded it by $15.9 million by taking the MMO. So that's problem number one. Problem number two is we have an 8% return, which is unrealistic, which is what the actuary reported each of the last five years. The oversight of administration of the plans has been lax, reference to the double pension scandal. The third-party administrator has not been hired yet. I don't think we should put a dime into the pension until a third-party, nationally-recognized administrator is hired. And the last major problem, as has been well reported, is we have over 50% of firemen who are disabled, or 50% retired firemen on a disability pension, and over 50% of retired policemen on a disability pension. This is draining millions of dollars from our pension plan. So before we put a dime of money into the plans, we need to make sure that there are safeguards in place to make sure that that money is spent well, and that those pension plans are funded, but not on the backs of the taxpayers and the elderly people in the city of Scranton. Thank you.
Thank you. Cesar, the question to you, please.
Okay. I think that it's, we do owe it to the firefighters, to the police officers. We do owe it to them to have that pension, have that money in there. The result of that is it's what's happening now, right? So what are we going to do? Next thing to do is actually get the reform, get a reform from the state, get some help from the state. We get that done, and what happens after that, then, because the city is under budget, we don't have enough money to put in there, then the taxpayers end up paying for it. So I believe that, leading on to where we need, you know, the answer is jobs. The answer is getting more businesses in here, creating more revenue so we can put back in there, so we can offset any kind of, any kind of offset, any kind, we can just put that back in there, make sure that we have enough funds to cover anything that pops up.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Joe Wexler. So, Joe, I have been asking this question probably of every city council candidate and every mayoral candidate since I started moderating debates for the League of Women Voters. We have been a distressed city since 1992. Is there any hope at all that within your next term, if you are so elected, that the city will become a non-distressed city for the first time in 25 years? You have to turn on your mic.
I've asked that question many times, and I think for the first time, we can say yes, without a doubt. The financial plan that we've had right now was working. We're back in the financial community. We have banks competing for our business, which we never had before. Our relationship with the Pennsylvania Economy League is going to come to an end. We are going to be out of distressed status, and when that happens, we'll be able to enjoy even more financial respect out in the community. We have corrected some of the major problems that put us in distress. We've escaped the default of the parking authorities. We've paid the judgment that was owed to our police and fire units. Agree or disagree, the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority has allowed us to retire some long-term debt. We have balanced budgets. We have, we have a plan right now. We're planning budgets out ahead of time. Overall, the city is in much better financial shape than it was in 2013 when I ran. I remember when I ran, really, no one was interested. No one was interested in running for city council. The fact that we're closer to distressed status, I feel very confident now. That's why we have so many candidates here this evening. I think it's kind of safe to get back in the water now. I am very satisfied that we'll be out of distressed status by, as soon as 2018, I believe.
All right, thank you. Kyle, the question goes to you, please. What about our distressed status?
I don't think there's any question that the city is going to leave distressed status. I think it's a question of how do we plan to make sure that we never enter distressed status ever again. And one of the ways of doing that is not repeating mistakes of the past. The Scranton Parking Authority default was probably one of the most irresponsible financial decisions this city has ever done, and in this city, that's saying something. But with the $19 million of the $27 million from the sewer sale is going towards paying high interest debt that was created as a result of the sewers, of the Parking Authority default. That was bond issues in 2012 and 2013. So I think it's not making, so there's no question of whether or not we're going to exit distressed status. We're going to be forced to exit distressed status in the next four years by the state, one way or another. It's how do we plan for a future where we don't enter distressed status ever again?
Okay, thank you. Paul, the question to you.
I also agree with the other constituency. I think there's a very, very strong possibility that in the near future, we will be out of distressed status. I think that is due to a lot of the footwork that has been in place, that has been put in place over the past few years. I think that this city is at a crossroads right now. Everything that we do from this point is monumentally important. How we spend and save and control inflow and outflow of our expenditures and our revenues is critically important. But to answer the question, quite simply, yes, we will be out of distressed city status.
Okay, thank you. Bill, the question to you.
Thank you. I have serious concerns about the report that was issued by the Pennsylvania Economy League detailing a three-year exit plan for the city from Act 47 distressed status. No matter what anybody says, the city still has systemic problems. We still have legacy costs. We still have a government that we cannot afford. You know, a few years ago, my colleagues passed, or voted on passing, two new labor contracts with the police union and the fire union into 2021. Instead of opening them up and getting savings, we also gave things away. And I think that we really tied our hands by doing that. That's number one. Number two, healthcare has gone up nearly 70% just this past year. So these are concerns that I still have. While we may get out of distressed status, are we really a government that can afford the services, the salaries, and the benefits that we pay out? Thank you.
Thank you. Cesar, the question goes to you.
I don't really see a black and white, direct answer to that right now. I can say, once I'm in, if elected, then it would be easier for me to actually be more certain on whether we can do that, or if we can, you know, be out of the relieved status. So I believe, once I'm in office, if elected, then we can go from there.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you.
Yes, thank you. It was mentioned that the city has been distressed since 1992, and just to put that into some perspective, in 1992, I was five years old. So that tells you how long the city has been labeled as a distressed city. Somebody else mentioned that being distressed is a label, and that is very true. The city has made tremendous progress over the last number of years to try to shed that distressed label. What's even more important than the label of being distressed is the sentiment of the residents of Scranton, how they feel, how their pocketbook is looking. The reforms, in order to help the people, started last year with the no-tax-increase budget, the first one in decades. There's much more work that needs to be done on that front. We talked about the garbage fee, we talked about the taxes, talked about the wage tax. Scranton being a distressed city isn't only about the city, it's more about the people. And we need to focus, much of the focus over the last number of years has been on the city and the city's budget. But that focus needs to turn to the residents of Scranton and do everything we can so the residents of Scranton aren't distressed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Kyle Donahue. So this is also a question that I ask pretty much every election season, one of my favorite questions. Scranton has five college campuses located either totally or partially within our borders, and three more located in the county. What can Scranton do to sell the city to students and their families for both the short term and post-graduation? We talk about brain drain, we talk about our young people leaving. What can we do? The question to you.
You know, that's one of the things, the brain drain is one of the things that dampers our economy. I went away to school at Temple University for four, five years, and then I decided to come home, because I believed in what the city could be, not what it was. to come home because I believed in what the city could be, not what it was. So we have to create an environment that not only could create good-paying, family-sustainable jobs, but we also have to sell the sense of community that we have. The people from this area are some of the best people you'll ever meet, but we have to sell that. And I feel like sometimes our elected officials don't necessarily portray the goodness of this area. So I think that's something that, first off, we need to sell, and we also have to start getting people to invest and, and really believe and buy in what the city is doing and how we are moving our city forward.
Thank you. Paul, the question to you.
Well, I proudly, I went to La Juana College, got my associate's degree there before moving on to get my bachelor's degree. What I think we've done in the school board was we started, I don't think letting people leave in the first place is the best idea, although they want to try those things, they want to, I want to provide the stability and the structure here to allow them to stay here. So at our high schools, we do offer college-accredited programs. We do offer programs for the trades as well. I've spent multiple meetings with the Scranton Chamber of Commerce. One of the biggest things that we have here, along with the five colleges, is we have three hospitals. The biggest draw to this area right now is in nursing and medical fields. That collaboration that we can continue with those businesses and those entities, I think that is what we can sell to the people that are growing up here, or the people that are looking here to come here. We have the University of Scranton and Marywood. I think the university has around 10,000 students, and Marywood has about 6,000. We do have the, the numbers of students coming to this area that are gonna get here, that are gonna get a look for the next four years to see what our city looks like. We have to get into those schools and talk with those people and collaborate with these colleges to let them know that we have the sustaining jobs that we're working on, that the city government is moving forward, and we're preparing ourselves to be a real leader in the state of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. Bill, the question to you.
Thank you. You know, I always think of my two children. I have a 19-month-old, Jack, and a five-month-old, Murphy. And I think of what kind of future they're gonna have here in the city, what kind of opportunities they're gonna have. What is the city gonna look like, not in five years, but 10, 20, 30 years? Are there gonna be jobs here? Are they going to stay here and raise their own family? So if I'm looking at the city of Scranton, I want to look to define ourselves. What kind of vision do we have? What kind of city are we going to be in the next 10, 20, 30 years? Right now, we have very strong assets. We have a vibrant arts community. We have a medical system that is second to none. We have the only medical school in the Northeast, and we have good, strong neighborhoods. We are also a relatively safe community. We have a strong police department with dedicated public servants and a very strong fire department. So that's how I would sell our city to those from the outside. But you can't sell your city unless you believe in yourself, and that's one of the maybe criticisms that I've had about this administration, and one of the areas that we've differed. I haven't seen us promoting ourself. I haven't seen us telling our story. And that's what we need to do for the future of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Caesar, the question goes to you.
I came to the city in 2000. When I came here, my family moved up here as well, and it was nice. It was very nice. There were many jobs, you could find a job anywhere. Unfortunately, for some people, they would have one job, and they would lose it, find another job, because there were so many jobs. It was nice. Now, I would say, you don't see that not as much anymore, and if you do find a job, it's minimum wage. There's, there's, there's not, there's no good jobs here. I don't want to say there's no good jobs, but there's not many good-paying jobs for people to sustain, you know, a mortgage, or to pay for taxes, city taxes, you know? And another thing is, I think we're lacking a little bit of equal opportunity here. I believe there's, there's more people now, from the time that I moved to Scranton, from all kinds of different ethnicities, all kinds of different race, countries, and I believe they're just hiding in the outskirts, because no one, no one is actually reaching out into the communities. Where are they? What are they doing? I believe we should reach out more and work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the question goes to you.
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to say I feel at home here as a graduate of the University of Scranton. Dr. Harris was one of my professors, so it does feel good. Although, this building was not here when I went to school here, but there are a number of people, I know Councilman Gahn as well, attended the University of Scranton. We both chose to stay in the city. And there are success stories of people moving in from out of town. One specific developer, I won't mention him by name, he came here to go to the University of Scranton, and then he decided, he fell in love with Scranton and decided to start his business here. He's been very successful, and he's a resident of the city now. The two, a couple of the biggest things we need to do to promote ourself is the education and medical. The medical college and our medical system in the city of Scranton is one of the best in the area. That's one way that we can promote ourselves and get younger people to stay here and to stop the brain drain. The other thing I do want to mention is Scranton has some of the best people that you'll meet anywhere in northeastern Pennsylvania. In Scranton, whenever a neighbor is sick or is having a hard time, neighbors help one another. Community fundraisers, there's a dozen of them every week, because we're always trying to help each other out. And on the public safety front, just take a ride down to Wilkes-Barre or Hazleton and decide where you want to live. You want to live in Hazleton? You want to live in Wilkes-Barre? Or do you want to live in Scranton? The answer to that question is simple: Scranton for sure.
Thank you. Joe, the question to you.
Thank you. I'm also a graduate of the University of Scranton, but it was only on Linden Street at the time that I went there, so. It wasn't the Quanza Huts either. Just kind of repeating what was said here, eds and meds are huge for this area. We've seen a large commitment of the education improvements in the city and the medical. The investment that Guy Senior is going to make in our medical college is going to be huge. I think one thing that we, that we do underestimate is our cultural values in our city. Just bringing the Jersey Boys to the Cultural Center for one week brought thousands of people to the downtown, so very simple. Yesterday, a kind of a French festival, the Cannabis Festival, was held at Naug Park. I didn't see anybody there. I wasn't there either, but, but the fact, the fact that someone stepped up, a young entrepreneur stepped up, got 87 vendors to go to that park, and they probably, they probably had 5,000 to 6,000 people go through that park yesterday. But one of the biggest problems that we're gonna face in this area is we have to take care of our environment. The Keystone Sanitary Landfill represents a huge detriment to any growth to this city. I was up on Stafford Avenue the other day, and the sun was out, and you can actually look down Stafford Avenue right now and see the landfill. I think the opposition that has been forming within the area really has brought out a coalition of people that do appreciate that the environment is very important to our area, and I encourage that we keep that fight up. I'm also quite concerned there are companies planning on using the river for a hydraulic plant, and I'm concerned about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that concludes the time that I have to ask questions this evening, although I do believe it was Kyle who offered to stay here for three hours tonight. Before we move on to closing statements, I just want to say that these are the candidates on the Democratic ticket for Scranton City Council, and we will be voting for three of these people. Also, Richard Johnson is running on the Republican ticket. Because this is a primary election, we did not invite Mr. Johnson to participate this evening. Hopefully, we will be repeating a debate in the fall, and we would absolutely invite Mr. Johnson at that point in time. I also want to remind you that we are a volunteer organization, and we would welcome your membership. And if you are so inclined to support the work of the League, there are baskets on the chairs on the way out, and we would welcome your contributions this evening as well. Just as we drew a name for the person who would answer the first question first, we also drew a name for the person who would give the first closing statement, and that is Bill Gahn. So Bill, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight to be able to express our views, and I'd like to thank all of you in the audience and all of those watching at home. My name is Bill Gahn, and I'm running for reelection as Scranton City Council. It has been an absolute honor and a privilege to serve you for the past four years. I have met so many wonderful people. I have sat across the kitchen table from you. I've looked into your eyes, I've listened to your stories, and I've tried to help you, because that is what this job is all about. For the last four years, I have been an independent voice on this council. I have not been a rubber stamp for the mayor and his administration. I have not been afraid to ask the tough questions, and I have fought tooth and nail for the taxpayers of this city, whether it was fighting against the expansion of the landfill, fighting against the ill-advised sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority, and working with our communities across northeastern Pennsylvania to make sure that our people do not have to pay outrageous fees and outrageous taxes. If I get elected for another term, I promise to continue to be that independent voice, to continue to be open-minded, I'll continue to ask the tough questions, and I'll continue to take a stand on these important issues. So I humbly ask for your vote and your support on May 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Gahn. The next closing statement will be from Caesar Reyes.
First, I would like to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here. I would like to say that I'm very freshly new to this. I've never, I've never been involved in politics, I never thought I would be, but, you know, the main reason why I decided to run for city council is because I feel the burden as well, as a resident. I work 10, 11, 12 hours a day to make ends meet. I do, I live check, check, check to check every week, and I do feel the high taxes. I do not own a business. I don't have, I don't have money. I don't come from a family that has money. I've never ran a campaign before, so I'm doing this out of the kindness of my heart to actually help. I'm looking at this as a tool, just as I've looked at my job as a staffing recruiter, as a tool to help other people, how we have been before. I, one thing I can never understand when you ask a politician is, when you ask them a question, and the politician will say, "I can, I will promise that I would get rid of taxes, I would reduce taxes, I would do this." The minute someone promised me something like that, then my vote's down. The only thing that I can promise you is that I can be humble, I will be sincere, I would fight, I would do my job to the best of my ability, which is actually serve the people. I will serve the people until, until the end. If you, if I'm elected, I will fight for more jobs and for equal opportunities for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Caesar. Pat Rogan, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this debate tonight, the University of Scranton for hosting us, all of my colleagues up here for an issue-oriented discussion about the topics that are important to the residents of Scranton. I would also like to thank everyone who attended today's debate, the TV viewers, and I would especially like to thank my beautiful wife, Amanda, for her support during this campaign. There is no greater honor than to serve as your representative on city council. If I am reelected to council, I'll promise to fight each and every day for the hard-working people and the senior citizens of Scranton. I will continue to oppose the unfair $300 garbage fee, fight for a long overdue tax reduction for the residents of Scranton, and continue to investigate wasteful spending and double pensions. As a lifelong resident of Scranton, you have seen me at your church pitniks, your neighborhood associations, community events, and walking the streets of Scranton, trying to help anyone who needs assistance. You know me, and now I need your help. On May 16th, I would be honored to have your vote for Scranton City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear now from Joe Wexler.
Thank you to the League for having us. Thank you for the public for coming out. It shows me the commitment that we do have to our city that this many people came out to listen to these six characters here, but that's a compliment to you. I've been, I've participated in many debates over the course of the years, and for many times, I always sat here and said what I would do. This is the first time I have an opportunity to say what I did. I thank the people of the city of Scranton for giving me the opportunity to serve on city council. I also thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity to be the president of city council. I replaced Bob McGough, which is, there should be a better word than replace Bob McGough, because you can't replace Bob McGough. But as city councilman, I have made tough decisions on taxes, contracts, and asset management. These decisions have led to a reduction of borrowing rates, elimination of high interest debt, and increased contributions to our pension fund. As a result of also these decisions, the city has moved closer to financial stability, and we've created an environment where there is no tax increase for 2017, and I also believe that there's a good chance there'll be no tax increase in 2018. I've continued to support the neighborhoods. I'm a product of the neighborhood movement. I served as a neighborhood president and activist for 25 years. I continue to attend neighborhood meetings, and I commend every person that goes to a neighborhood and shows their commitment to their, to their success. Going to the neighborhood meetings, we hear so much, we were able to do paving in areas that hadn't been touched by paving for years and low to mod incomes. One of the greatest things, I think, that we've accomplished as a city council is the putting, the installation of the LED lights in the neighborhoods. They've increased safety, they've increased beautification. I would like to be able to go back to city council for one reason only: I know how to do this job now. I know how to do constituent service. I know how to deal with other government agencies. I know how to deal with our, with our universities and our hospitals. I would like an opportunity to continue serving, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. And we'll hear now from Kyle Donahue.
I would, I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters and the University of Scranton for hosting this debate, and Andrea for being a gracious moderator. As a lifelong resident of Scranton, I have not lost faith in our city. My fiance and I bought a house in South Scranton because we believe that Scranton still has the potential to recover and thrive once again. One of the obstacles to moving our city forward is our current distressed status. To shred that status, we must produce realistically balanced budgets, reform our pension systems to be fair, realistic, and financially solvent, and also to create an economic environment that will foster economic development and to expand our tax base and to create jobs. We also need to do, have a sustainable plan to make sure we never enter into distressed, distressed status ever again. We must do this while also being mindful of the burden that taxpayers have across this, that we're putting on taxpayers across this city. Also, on the school board, I also introduced a resolution against, in opposition of the expansion of the Keystone Landfill, because I don't believe that that's in the best interest of our children and the people that come after us to have a dump, you know, to be sandwiched in between two dumps, as we are right now. And as your councilman, I pledge to be open and transparent, to be responsive to taxpayer concerns, and to fight to eliminate nuisance taxes and to work tirelessly to ensure that Scranton will restore real estate values and be able to prosper once again. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear now from Paul Duffy.
Well, I don't think I could begin my closing remarks without saying thank you very much to the League of Women Voters, and I'd like to offer them a round of applause for everything that they do and every time that they do it.
Thank you.
That also eats up about 10 seconds, because I don't have a full two minutes to offer. But what I do have to offer is, my name is Paul Duffy, and I'm running for Scranton City Council, and I humbly ask for your vote, because I do have a lot to offer. I am experienced. I've been on police, in the police department. I've served on unions. I've served as an administrator. I've served on big boards. And what I've always given myself credit for is I've been able to communicate across boundaries and come to compromises where everybody leaves a little upset, because they didn't get exactly what they want. That's what I think government is based on, and as your leader and your servant, I would be humbled and proud every single day to go out and serve you. I miss that dearly from being a police officer, and I look to refoster this, this passion that I have as a member of the Scranton City Council. Thank you so much for listening, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Just a few more words in closing. I do want to thank the University of Scranton for hosting us. I will say, they are a great partner to the League of Women Voters, the political science
I will say they are a great partner to the League of Women Voters, the Political Science Department. Dr. Jean Harris is with us and is also a member of the League. We actually couldn't do the things we do without having such a great partner in the University of Scranton, so I want to thank them. I also want to thank ECTV and Mark Miore for his help and without him, we wouldn't be able to reach as many people as we do. There's, besides the Scranton City Council, we are also electing school directors this year, so four school directors. I had the privilege of interviewing all 10 of the candidates this past Saturday and you can see those interviews on ECTV. We hope to get those interviews and also this debate on our website as well shortly and that's LWVlackawanna.org. I also want to say I know that there's another school board debate coming up. We opted out of a debate with 10 candidates. It's really hard to do that. But I understand on May 9th in the Times Building, I don't know who's hosting it, but if you're interested in the school board, you want to check that out. So again, thank you to everyone for being here this evening and how about a final round of applause for everyone for their commitment to democracy.